Oh, bull.
No, it didn't.
Okay.
We're here up and running. It is Wednesday, March 25th, 2020. We'll call an in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll try to run through this quick. Minutes for reports received and filed. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
I have nothing, except for these meetings. Everything is canceled, so. Doing our social distancing. What's funny though is you can find out a lot of stuff you can do via emails nowadays.
Yeah, I mean, we have a handbook meeting still on the books for next Monday. I don't know if that'll occur or if we'll try to do something.
Just do that poppin' open or something.
Yeah, Debbie and I were talking.
Yeah.
And I've written extensive notes online.
Right.
I was thinking about scanning it and sending it to them.
Right.
She was thinking about that, too.
Try to do, maybe even do a Skype meeting or something, but maybe we need to keep moving on that, so.
If you're gonna do the note things, I suggest we do one or two at a time, because it's too confusing to upload a whole, a whole policy blurb of all the notes and expect everyone to... That's one of the good things about talking, figure on one subject, you can talk about any of the next ones. Just my thought.
And I can give her Jill's comments and then let her write that up in the book and then give us another draft copy, because we did get through half of it anyway.
Well, I found some legal problems with it, you know, the whole U.S.A. thing with simply copying from the last one after I explicitly told her that it was not legal.
Yeah, she said she hadn't got to updating it yet before she sent it out that time, so.
Anyway, we talked about doing that, maybe it's something to work on.
Yeah, let's keep working on, even if it's small pieces of it, let's keep whittling away at it, so. That's all I got.
Okay. Well, I got ELC briefing today. Are we doing our leadership conference call tomorrow? Okay, so we got that. And then Friday's an ELC meeting, too. That's all I've got, so. Okay, presentation from staff, consultants, invited guests. Again, do you want, Judge, how about if we make you an invited guest? And you could be very brief. You said you have some prices on.
I have some information about some, just to update, oh, I'm sorry. Can I stand?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll pick it up, but just to kind of update the commission, a couple weeks ago, we started talking on that side of the wall, if you will, or that side of the walkway, about the need for a deep cleaning disinfection of the courthouse, the public spaces of the courthouse, so not cleaning my desk off or Judge Beadham's desk off, but literally a good wipe down disinfectant. Territorial staff, Danny does a great job, but what we did a week ago or so, six days ago, is I reached out after talking with Judge Joyce and talking with a couple of you guys just to kind of get some estimates and then know whether it's something you guys would have to consider in an emergency funding issue or whether it needed to go to an RFP. Just, you know, kind of before the session started, you started asking a couple of questions about the bids. I'll just forward them to you in email. I think we need to do it. Danny, who cleans the courthouse very well daily, believes we need to do it. He's doing a great job of wiping down, you know, common surfaces, but frankly, there hasn't been a deep clean of that courthouse in a while anyway, and now more than ever, we need that for the public spaces. Just in taking the lead from talking to Kristen upstairs and with a couple of you guys, is I went out and just kind of contacted five companies. Four of them have said they'll make bids, three of them got them in, one of them, I'm waiting on it any minute, and so that's why instead of printing them, I'll just forward to them in email. I will tell you that the range is anywhere from $6,000 to $13,000. So I know that that might take it into an RFP if you don't consider it emergency funding. The idea that we had in discussing it is we aren't having the public in the building very much right now. We're not closed for business. We're doing most of our business, however, over video, phone conference, and very limited in and out of the building for lawyers and litigants. Our security staff is literally meeting people at the door. But the point of that is that they could come in and do the cleaning during the day, which, number one, might save a little money instead of trying to do it on weekends or nights or whatever. And number two, they could do it sooner, and they could do it while we're not, while we're not having regular in-person public hearings, which the Supreme Court has dictated that we limit those through at least April 20th. So I think their order says April 17th, but that's through a Friday, so it'd be the next Monday before we, the earliest we'd have real full public dockets, at least. I don't know whether they'll extend that again or not, but I told that information to those companies, and I'll send them to you, and you guys can either contact one or more and have that conversation, because I don't know the answer to the question about, well, if we wipe it down now, do we have to do it again in a week? Do we have to do it every week? Danny can maybe answer some of those questions, too, because he does do the upkeep. When they came in, I had Danny walk them through, show them what we define as public spaces. It's obviously stairwells, railings, hallways, courtrooms, jury assemblies rooms, and bathrooms, basically. There are a couple clerk's offices that have desk counter space where the public comes in, one on the second floor and one on the third floor. So that's the idea, and I guess I think we definitely need to do some sort of deep cleaning. That's the consensus with the judges over there, but how you guys do that and what the funding source is, while I was just trying to run it down and push the ball down the field and let you guys take it from there, so.
Yeah, my question, what, you know, if we spend $6,000 to $13,000, when we open it up again and we have juries coming in, they're using the handrails, they're using the bathrooms, is that all immediately contaminated again, or, I mean?
That's why, I don't know the answer, that is why we're restricting access right now. It's, you know, by Supreme Court order, obviously, but also, we had talked about it, just not letting people in. We meet them at the door and we kind of, our security staff right now is asking a couple of questions. Do you have symptoms? Do you have fever? About your family, those type of questions, even before they're allowed in for just a regular filing, much less a hearing. And those hearings were restricting even who in person comes in. And the only hearings we're having right now in person are the ones that Supreme Court says are essential to continue for constitutional or confinement reasons, so. We're obviously having video dockets and telephone hearings, too, but, so.
Yeah, send that if you would, but then I do want to ask them, because if it's, you know, if it's good, well, nobody's there, but as soon as people come back in, we're back to where we were, then, yeah, I don't know. Not yet. Send us the information if you would.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Cotton, and if we gotta make a decision on it, I mean, it would be an emergency deal, we could get that taken care of.
Yeah, the other thing would be is, you know, what's the difference? Cheapest isn't always best, and, you know.
No, I, yeah, well.
You know, what are we getting for what they're proposing, so.
The bids have a lot of that information, but you're right, you're still in that conversation as you look at them, and we tried to make it as much apples to apples by Danny walking them through and telling each one what the expectation of the court has.
Yeah, and then we have the opportunity to contact the vendors as well and address questions with them, because Cotton's just the messenger at this point, and, so.
Okay. Commission comments, bids and contracts, unfinished business, new business, counts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Is that one on there, right?
Yeah, you do.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Signing of independent agreement for Pringer Family Center.
This is an independent contractor agreement to provide training, and Michael said this is coming out of the training budget, right, Debbie?
Yes.
If you have questions, you can call, but I've got his number.
Okay.
It's $2,500.
I just hadn't seen anything on it, so I don't know really anything about it.
It's David Boucher, he's my superintendent.
Okay.
They had an agreement and it was not correct, so I redid it.
Do one table till next week and go over it, or?
No, I mean, it sounds like David's gonna be training some of his newer employees on protocol and stuff. It's hourly, it's $15 an hour, up to $2,500 bucks, so.
So what agreement did we have in before? You said we had agreement before.
Well, they had just, and he just started doing this, Jeff. They had done up one out there, and it was between the 19th Judicial Circuit and David Boucher, and I told Michael, I said, "No, the commission is paying this, not the courts." And second, it was written in such a way that it wasn't a correct independent contractor arrangement, and I clarified with Michael exactly what the arrangement was, and it is, it does qualify as independent contractor, but I reworded all of that.
So it's not anything different besides the contract is different? We've been doing this all along?
Right, right. The agreement they had written up was signed between their superintendent and Boucher. I mean, it was completely not, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so this is just... Yeah, if that's the case, then I'm fine with it.
And I agree, so now it's a correct independent contractor agreement with the correct parties, signed by the commission.
I move that we approve and sign the independent contractor agreement with...
David Boucher.
David Boucher.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Signing of MOU with Missouri State Public Defenders.
This is what Judge Beadham was telling you about the other day.
For the 10th album?
Yeah. Mary Fox and Justin have signed it, so that's for you all to sign on that.
That's good with that?
Yeah, I think that's...
I move that we sign the MOU with Missouri State Public Defenders.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First reading of budget adjustment number three.
This is for $556,956.78. It's the EMS Enterprise Fund. There's no action today. It is the new, what do you want to call it?
So it's for GMT, a program that we did back in December through the federal reimbursement Medicaid fund. So we have to transfer about $500,000, and then the package we did will get roughly $330,000 in additional funds. So net profit at the end of the day should be about $330,000 by the end of the year.
Okay.
Again, no action today. We'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Discussion of pretrial release budget position.
You know, Donnie came and talked to you guys, so we just put it back on the budget for official approval of adding that position to pretrial release.
We're supposed to add the position in pretrial, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm back here. I can talk to that if I need to. Richard Lee is available, and Donnie knew that I was coming over for the cleaning thing anyway, so here I am. If you need me to say anything else on that, I can, or answer questions. I know you all heard from me previously about the fact that pretrial and its initial manifestation was for one purpose, and that that purpose has grown because of the change in the bond rules from the Supreme Court. My division is the one that works with them daily at 1 o'clock docket today, that I'm going to rely heavily on information from pretrial. We've got some turnover there, which we talked about last time, and this is for further discussion. And I don't know the timing of when that extra person, and I'll leave that to you all, but...
The way I understood, that was still up in the air, just for a little bit yet, so.
So.
We gotta pay for him on it or something, didn't we?
No. Did we, he came up with the amount he was wanting.
Came up with the amount, but I don't think we have a start date.
Right.
I think we signed the one for...
I believe that's...
Oh, is that to replace Randy?
Replace, yeah.
Yeah.
That was replace Randy. This is the additional, if you will, and frankly, that timing is affected by a couple of things that we don't control, health of Richard Lee, the coronavirus, which has both, can affect and make the need greater or make the need less, and we really don't know what that's gonna mean just right away, but that's all I was here on for that.
Yeah, so we talked about it in closed session, because we were talking about specific individuals last week, and then we needed to get the approval of the, replacing retired person wasn't a big deal, because that was just replacing, but then he also wants to add another court martial, so that's why this is here now to approve that. And I'm gonna be a no on it, just because of budget time. That's where we were at with it. We added some part-time and stuff to it. It's nothing against the program. I think it's a great program. I don't think we can argue that, but I think in budget time, we talked about adding people. I'm fine with adding some part-time or trying to work with them for overlap with people being on for surgeries and stuff.
So the way I understood this is that we were gonna get Randy's position replaced, and then we were gonna kind of wait on hiring a new position, kind of see how that goes, is...
Well, I think they wanted, hopefully, the thought was to have Richard Lee back in order to train the second person.
Right.
So I still think they wanted the second person now to know they have it available. When that actually starts, it could be April, May, June.
April, yeah.
Well, they got somebody in mind.
Right.
Yeah, and I...
Out of these candidates that they did the first round.
I mean, I'm good, I'm still good with it.
I am, too.
Okay. So I move that we approve the added position for pretrial release.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay.
And while we're on that, talked to Richard Lee this morning. He's got some issues with his wife having some respiratory issues, and so while he's working at home, he would like Randy to stay on for two additional weeks to help train his replacement. And so I told him I'd bring that up. I mean, Richard's just, Richard's not gonna be here to do it, so if we could keep Randy on for two more weeks to train this new person coming in, it would be helpful.
We've done that with others, so I mean, we kind of did that with Bill Farr, and, so, yeah.
Right. This is kind of, I mean, normally, Richard would be here, but because of certain circumstances, it... Are you okay with keeping Randy here for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, because they're still having to do the pretrial release program.
Right.
Yeah, that program is not, sorry, but that program has not slowed down. In fact, it's something to read more for, we got a jail docket today with 22 or 23 cases on it, so it's busy. And we're trying to make sure the right people stay in for the offenses of which they're charged, but also consideration of the health and wellness of everybody over there.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So I'll let him know.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, discussion of EMS logistics budget position. Thanks, Judge.
Thank you.
And again, you guys talked about this position before. It's just the approval to put that in the budget for this year.
So, given the circumstances currently, we know that we originally shifted that position to a part-time, so what we're looking to do is shift the money from part-time over into the full-time budget. And it's just that, I think it's a $16,000 difference in total salary change. So we do have those three open float positions, so that money from the end of your budget line item should not change. We can't keep up, especially with how hard it is to get supplies and different things right now. We just don't have the capability to keep up with someone who's working 29 every maximum 29 hours a week. So we pass through the consideration of having this finish at full-time.
So I was a little unsure about this as we talked previously. I mean, I think, I mean, although I'd like to keep the budget consistent, we're just in a different time right now, where we, I mean, we got tons of people that maybe don't want to come to work. I mean, and here we got somebody that's working their tail off, and, so, I mean, I...
I can tell you that she saved us around approximately $25,000 in the last two weeks. I acquired supplies out of different places for masks. So right now, surgical masks are going for about a dollar a piece, and we've got a significant amount of surgical masks for our patients and our staff, and so those moves along, they're saving us about $25,000. So her ability to maintain and be able to do this, I still think ultimately would be a net positive, because the price will go down because of her ability to use, to take that time, the extra time she would have and try to find those savings, similar to what David was able to do in his position in his full-time.
Yeah. David was full-time, and he did an excellent job, but I kind of wondered when you went part-time, but, you know, just maintaining ambulances and everything else, too. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm...
You can say it, you're now.
I know, I know.
So, okay, remind me, are you gonna take some money out of part-time or other physicians and completely remove it out of part-time?
Yes, sir.
Because we talked about this pretty extensively of budget time, too, and I raced you over the coals and I want to do it again today. Just enjoy that, chief. At that time, wasn't that individual really was only wanting part-time work as well? And it seemed to work with that individual's schedule and ours?
So it had a time.
And that's changed, though, since then.
It has because of the amount of work that's required. So it was to see if we could pull it off part-time, and I think one of the things we did say at that time is that if that changed, we would have to come back and look for three months, we've almost, well, for three months, we've been at our very best. That individual's home life is, while it's not changed, there are some things you've been able to...
Well, you don't have to get into it, but, I mean, I just want to make a point that that's where it changed between now and budget time, because I'm on the fence with it, and my deal is, don't come back to me in three months saying, "Look, I need some more part-time." This is recorded, just so you know, because I've heard that stuff before. And then we get to be the bad guys and say, "No," so, I mean, I'm fine with it with, you know, that consideration that you're gonna pull that away from there. It's not affecting the bottom line of your budget, so, yeah. I just wanted to race you over the coals for a little bit. I hope I don't need an ambulance anytime soon.
You need a motion on that, Debbie, or...
Yeah, if you would, just approval of it changing.
I move that we approve the changes for the logistics position at EMS from part-time to full-time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, transfer.
Just to pay for him, one.
Pay for him, two, and a transfer, one.
From part-time to full-time.
Money-wise.
Right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
He gave you this, so now the sheriff...
He doesn't know what's going on.
By your competition here.
Discussion of sheriff about the camera system.
I have seven part-time, so there's a, we did the bid for the video system for the detectives in our interview rooms. The bid came out higher. We had said $25,000 is what I put in capital improvements, and it came out to be, we need $10,828 more for contingency to be able to do that. I have the form here, so.
So we're taking this from Brian's budget?
Except for Debbie, I'm trying to set it in.
We're taking it from Brian's budget?
Five foot five.
Debbie wants you to move a little further.
Ten.
Right, you emailed this stuff to us last week or sometime, right?
I think that's a something different.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
So didn't we just award the cameras with turnkey mobile last week?
Yeah, that's what this is.
So they were a little bit higher than the other vendor, and then this is an addition or add-on, or...
Well, it's not an add-on, so we awarded the bid, and it was higher than what I had put in capital improvements. Capital improvements, I put $25,000.
Okay.
It turned out to be like $35,000 or something.
Okay, all right. Now I'm following. A little slow.
It's early.
Not really. Okay, so. I move that we transfer the money from contingency for the camera system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of sheriff about the disaster response budget line.
So this is something I've talked with Kristen, and I think y'all have talked with her, too. Some of these little, and this is something I actually talked with Matt about, too. Some of the funds that we're having to spend, little funds here and there, is we can absorb in our budget, but over a long period of time, it's gonna start affecting the bottom. So what we're wanting to do is form a new line item in our budget for $10,000 for disaster relief or whatever Kristen came up with the term. I actually was gonna call it something else. Jeff actually had a good idea and said that, let's name it something that we can use, if, God forbid, if something ever comes up again. That's why I say disaster relief or emergency disaster or something. So that way, we can keep the funds and we can attach them to one line item, and it makes it easier to track, and it's not affecting our overall budget, because we're not budgeting for the amount of money we're gonna spend or what he's gonna spend, so.
The budget officer who controls the accounting system and the list of the accounts. She came up with an emergency account. We've had that account within Bill Farr, sorry, Sierra's budget for years, so we'd like to put that back in Sierra's, put it in the sheriff, and put it in EMS, is what she wants to do. Just trying to figure out a dollar amount within each fund, what would be appropriate at this point, and then, so we can better keep track of this if it does become something we can ask for reimbursement on.
So since that time, I've talked to the auditor, Kristen, and she said, "Maybe we can do this under the emergency management part somewhere."
Yes, anything that...
Or do we need to keep it separate, what the sheriff does, what we do, what EMS does, so it all needs to be...
It's kind of to be separate, because the reimburse is different. So, for instance, some of the stuff he's gonna be able to reimburse for it, it's a lot more logical. He's gonna get more money back on stuff he's spending than I will, because it's a medical.
Okay.
Plus, you can't, I don't think you can cross the EMS sales tax money with law enforcement sales tax money and all that.
No, when they get the money back, he goes to general fund, John. That's how I'm trying to do this.
I do, I do.
He slaps our hands if we try to...
Oh, he can't slap us right now.
The outside...
Let's just put the emergency fund under GR, and we'll just transfer the money into GR.
Um, no.
So however it works with us, and whatever numbers work with the record-keeping part, and then the amount.
Part of that is figuring out how much you want to transfer into those lines, because...
It's coming out of contingency.
Right, you'll have contingency with wire, have to figure out that number of what you're gonna take in contingency and put in there, because when we go in to try to itemize it, we have to have that funds available.
So if we have our account, general account, that's where it's gonna come from, right?
No, and each of their contingency will come, and one from our contingency.
So his will come for his sales tax, mine will come for my sales tax.
I'm following, too.
So, I mean, just throw out a figure, $5,000, $10,000, which, what do you want me to put into each one of them?
So, I mean, we're talking about small items. I mean, we're talking about incidental stuff, because...
Could be. We already have a lot.
Well, for him, probably not. For me, yes. I'm talking, like, right now, I think I'm at $2,000, a little over $2,000, and that's just for like $500, $600 bucks for a hand sanitizer and, you know, and just that kind of thing.
And I'm probably already at $2500, $300,000 for PPE and things like that.
So I think that's a different thing, and so that's the kind of stuff that should be coming from the EOC, is that we need funds for this, or we need to expand for this. I mean, that needs to be specific. I mean, if we're talking about incidental stuff, I think, you know, $10,000 should cover it, but...
Well, EOC, EOC doesn't have money. I mean, the...
I get that.
So, so the difference is, I think what the difference is, is if he needs supplies for his staff, he can just go out and get supplies. Now, if he needs a request through the state, you ask through EOC, and the EOC forces, goes and sends it up the line for PPE and stuff. for PPE and stuff. And if we get that, when if we get that, it would, then that would be free to us, but.
Sure, that's free, but we're, I mean, we were just talking about reimbursables. So, that would be stuff that we would need to go out and purchase, county purchase, and then turn into the feds for reimbursement.
And that's what all of these lines will be for. Those will be lines that we look at.
Well, I mean, if he's talking about twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, obviously, that's not coming out of SEMA and it's not coming out of the state. It's, we're, we're having to buy it and then hope that we get reimbursed for it.
Right.
So, that's, that is, from what I understand, that's, that's a request coming out of the emergency operations group that says, "Hey, we need this stuff." Or somebody's saying, "We need this stuff." And who's gonna pay for it?
Well, and that's, and I think what it's gonna come down to is, it's gonna be who, who it actually utilizes, who needs the items at that time. So, you can do, as you're saying, he can send a request through the EOC and it would go to the finance, the finance table. Finance would say, "We agree, you need this money." And then you would tell them to go ahead and buy it because they have no money. So, he would still have to put it. So, the request would go through the EOC. I see what you're saying. Are you saying just to track the requests?
Well, so, so, pick an arbitrary number, "I need two hundred grand." What, what for? So, you know, tell me what you need the money for. We can move the money to make the purchase, but, you know, to just say, you know, ten thousand I can live with for incidental stuff, but when we get beyond ten thousand, well, what are you buying? How much is it, you know?
Oh, I think when you get, I, I think, and I think you're gonna know that if he has to spend twenty-five grand, I think you're gonna know that before he spends it, but.
Right, and that may, and that may be a different thing every week. Okay, this week I need twenty-five grand, next week I need a hundred, next week I need two hundred. I mean, well, I don't know. I mean, but there again.
My concern is, is that if I have to come back or somehow write all those PPE requests, if I, if I can't get PPE and I need to start obtaining that PPE, by the time I come back and make that, that PPE is gone, right? So, that's my only concern for, I think anything else we can come back for but PPE, if I get my hands on it, I immediately need to pull the trigger at that moment because, I mean, we've got PPE on order that have gotten delayed now again. And so, we're back out trying to find it. So, while a lot of that is going to start coming from the hospital coalition, there's some of the items that are, that we're using that are not available through that, that we need to, to have that ability to come through.
So, he's ten thousand, is ten thousand?
Can we do ten thousand in general, ten thousand in the sheriff for now and fifty thousand over there? And then if there's other stuff that comes in, big dollar ticket items, he needs to let you guys know that I'm gonna go ahead and purchase this. Maybe I'll cancel it if that other outfit comes through with stuff for them.
Well, the protocol's still in place. I mean, our budget protocol's still in place. If it's over forty-five hundred, he's gonna have to get a phone bid. If it's over six thousand, he's gotta go out to RFP. I mean, that's still in place unless you guys make a determination.
I'd say that's not in place anymore if we're talking about emergency funds. I mean, that's just my opinion, but.
But then that would have to come back to the next commission meeting after that was purchased to let people know that that was an emergency, so.
But, I mean, do we, so, I mean, obviously, we had approved expending.
Probably about ten.
Ten, I think it was.
Well, I thought we had approved expending another twenty or something for PPE when he was looking to buy some stuff with the credit cards or?
Well, the most that they could get at that time was ten. So, then it kind of went away that.
Yes, we were able to find other PPEs, we didn't have to make that large expense. So, I think that's a particular expense for those full-face masks, respirators, we're not going to need. So, I don't see that one. What I do see coming up is if I can't get my hands on certain PPE, which have been backlogged and look like it maybe it's some of, or a couple of the items I'm gonna get my hands on potentially, is something like a gear extractor. That way, if I have to put people in turnout gear, which has a, a certain level of protection, I guess it's probably the best way to put that, I need to be able to wash that. And so, that gear, that gear extractor, right, that's going to run right around eighty-five hundred dollars. So, things like that, those are things, but that's gonna take three weeks if I don't have PPE in a certain timeframe. So, going out to bid for something like that right now, I don't know if it's practical because if I hit a pickle, I have to be able to wash this to the appropriate length. So, I think there are some expenditures that I'm going to have to make in order to keep ahead of it. So, there are, there are agencies that have people in quarantine or have had people in quarantine. I can't get, I gotta do my very best not to get in the bad spot. And so, by being able to take those proactive steps and be prepared, right, I'm always looking at five steps ahead. What happens if? That's my concern is if I get into a spot where I see, I find a solution to a potential problem, I need to probably act on those. Now, generally, as I do, you know, I always try to chat individually to each of you and say, "Hey, here's what's coming down the pipe, here's what I need to do." I would still make those calls and then after the fact, like Debbie said, come back in and say, "Hey, we all talked, we agreed, here's what we did."
So, we're talking ten thou, what, what amount are you comfortable with?
If we put forty thousand in there for now, we can always move that. To me, that's coming out of my contingency fund, so it's already allocated money just sitting in a non-allocated fund, right, meaning that it's not allocated to anything else. If we don't use it, we can move that back out. Correct me if I'm wrong, Debbie.
That's right. That's where I was at with it. It's gonna go into this dedicated fund for this. You know exactly what it's gonna be spent for. If we don't spend it, it goes right back to contingency.
Yeah, absolutely.
If that's your, I mean, a good faith estimate, I'm fine with, with putting it in there and using that. Who else do we need to look at?
Well, Sierra and if the sheriff's okay with ten.
The department probably needs something, they probably don't know.
We're gonna filter all that through Sierra, is the way they wanted to do that.
Because they don't have sales tax money, that's, we have to keep that separate.
It's the same fund.
I don't think Larry Benz would need anything, but.
I'd have to filter through Sierra too if he did. I'd have to filter through Sierra too if he did.
Yeah, all that, then she, she understands that she'll have to coordinate the efforts for reimbursement on all of this.
So, is forty enough if you're talking eighty-five hundred for some cleaning device?
So, that would be a capital expenditure, right? That I would then put the allocation number in there, but I would just move that, that money across. So, I mean, what you'll probably see more likely are things being moved around to facilitate that process more than the full expenditure. What's killing me right now is my PPE expenditures, ones that we knew when this was happening, we started buying up what we could. And then as this progresses and the time that it takes to mitigate this, that's where my concern is, mitigation timeframe.
I mean, I just think we do the ten, ten and fifty and.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you don't use it, you don't use it, so, but, I mean, obviously, you got.
Yeah, if we don't use it, it just at the end of the year falls back into the contingency anyway.
These are not normal times, so.
Okay, I'll get those transfers ready. I mean, if you guys, yeah, I don't know if you need to vote on them other than you need to sign the transfers.
Well, I, um. Do we need a motion to waive bidding requirements on, or the governor issue an order to suspend some of those rules and stuff on acquisitions for, I'm pretty sure he issued some.
Our's statutory.
Right.
He came out with a lot of.
He might have for an OA and what's in the CSR's, the governor can make, I mean, they can spend some stuff with the CSR's, but statutes.
They put out a list of all different things you can purchase through the, that they had, state contract, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's what I kind of passed around before.
Oh, but it's not available through COOP.
Right, so most of the things, so, a lot of those things they, they sent out were not things that I would use or things that would fit our needs. So, I guess that's our question, what needs to go to this?
Can we waive the bidding requirements for PPE as an emergency purchase?
Yeah, you can do the emergency, if you've got, and this could obviously qualify as an emergency. You can, it's in the statutes, you can make an emergency purchase, just make a motion and statewide, this is an emergency purchase.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
So, it's just a blanket?
Well, for, for PPE or?
For particular items used in this incident, I think is probably the better way or required for the incident. Well, do you have that, do you have a list of particular items?
I'd have to go back and look. I mean, so that's, the concern is, is it's a moving target, right? One week they're saying this is the right thing, the internet's gonna change this. So, generally though, we have a pretty good idea. Like, so.
Maybe PPE which may include, I don't know, so lay it out for them and then they can, okay, if that works.
Could we just say PPE or equipment needed?
Yeah, PPE or related equipment.
Related equipment.
Keeps it.
Generic enough?
Yeah, I don't want to tie your hands on it, but also don't have it out there and make any question about it if, if something does come up, so. If that's fine, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, so I move that we waive the bidding requirements and.
As an emergency.
As an emergency purchase for PPE or related equipment for the COVID-nineteen. State of emergency issue response.
Second. Did all that land?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll just be very technical about it because I just want to make sure we get reimbursement back on that kind of stuff.
Well, it's a little tricky.
Okay.
We're going backwards, I mean, we don't want to do a backflip, but, uh, first of all, this gets so heated.
Okay, it's just, they are very particular.
Okay, community development block grant.
All right, do you want to do a motion on the amount of money transferred into each emergency?
Kind of like we needed to, because we're just gonna do a transfer or not?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna do a transfer for those amounts.
Okay, if that's okay, we'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Ten.
Okay, so, community development block grant. So, Debbie, is this about yesterday's?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to take that off the agenda.
Okay, so.
Okay. Discussion of forwarding of county phone system.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ryan.
So, with the, you know, with the recent change of the environment, you know, working environment, things like that, I feel that at least five or twelve have their county phone extensions forwarded to their personal cellphone numbers. And I, I get that, you know, I get that. And I would, I would want to help that out, but the problem that I'm running into is, is without getting like way deep into our phone system, we have two PRIs and each PRI is capable of handling twenty-three incoming lines and twenty-three outgoing lines. Anytime that I forward a phone, it ties up two of those lines and not just one. So, the question is, 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 I mean, I can see, you know, some, but I can't see a lot because right now, there's, I would say, there's, there's some of the workforce out there that is, is doing this telecommuting, things like that. So, I kind of wanted to make you aware of that. Also, since we do have a lot of people that are working from home, they're coming in through our VPN or firewall and it's maxing out our bandwidth as far as like our internet speed. So, it's happened a couple of times this week over the past seven days. So, if this is gonna be a prolonged event, then, I don't know, maybe we should look into increasing our, our bandwidth to accommodate that, even though it's for a short, hopefully, right, a short period. I just kind of wanted to bring you guys up to speed on what's going on when it comes to those kinds of things and open it up for any questions.
I think somewhere down the road, we're gonna have more working from home too, so.
Yeah.
Um, so, so I guess I would like to see us not forward phones and try to have that go through our email system or something where people just could just leave a message and it would forward that to them as to, hey, this person called and then I can call them back.
I would think, it's my opinion, that's the way to go.
Right.
Um, you know, down the road when we do our phone system upgrade, we'll have some more flexibility with the newer technology we introduce. But, but right now, I would be concerned. Ever since I've been here, I was told that, you know, forwarding phones is kind of a taboo when it comes to our phone system, just because you are gonna start tying up resources and you don't know. So, like I said, I don't want to get way technical into it, but, so, like, a lot of departments have like one main line and then it hunts for a line to pick. But when you start tying up those additional lines to pick, then you're going to have people, you know, either not getting through or going straight to voicemail or something like that, so.
Yeah, yesterday I called Central Bank and they have Lisa there and then all of their people are working from home. So, they called me back. Last week I called Missouri Hospital Association. And again, they have, they have a central, somebody and, and so you tell them who you want to talk to and they called me right back. The same with Farm Bureau, I did that, I, I got a, you know, and they called me back. So, I, I'm, you know.
Yeah, if they leave a message on our phone system and they have it, they can have it set up to go straight to their cellphone, they can see who called and they can call them back, so. So, I, I think that, that'll work. I mean, it's not ideal, but, I mean, that works short-term. So, that's what I, that's what I would like to see done.
I'm fine with it too. We're, we're not in an ideal situation. I mean, when you call up to get food even from one of our local vendors, everything's being done by the phone, you can do some of it on internet too, but you're not always gonna get a, a phone ring, you're gonna get a busy signal. So, it's gonna happen, you just have to deal with it, you know? Just the same with other services that we provide. We don't have eight people in an office now. Now, we've got four or two to reduce it, any kind of exposure and to having to shut down completely, so. The phone line part, yeah, but I agree.
Okay, then to the internet part, so, obviously, we may have a lot of people working from home and so, I mean, I'd probably be okay with increasing our internet speed some, but I think we need to try to look at people working maybe in different shifts so that we're not maxing out our system because we could increase it, we could double it. I mean, and I don't know if even that does the trick, if everybody's trying to get on it all at once. And so, you know, is there, is there certain times that you can work seven to noon and be on the system and here's other times where other people are working twelve to five? I mean, I just don't know if they need to be on the system the whole time. And so, that's, I don't have a good grasp of that, but maybe some shifts where they're accessing our server.
So, is it kicking people off or is it just slow?
Slow.
Well, deal with it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I've lived through, well, we've all lived through the dial-up systems before.
But we can't live with.
That was slow.
So, the sheriff actually has their own bandwidth?
Okay.
Yeah, so, so they're not seeing this kind of, kind of performance issue, but, but we are. It's, it was two days, it's two days out of seven so far. That's, that's happened.
So, if we increase our bandwidth, I mean, does that help or?
That would help, yeah, that would, that would help. Now, it doesn't tell me how far above, a hundred percent we hit, you know, it just says you, you, you maxed it out, so.
So, is that something we can do temporarily or is that something?
I'd talk to CenturyLink about it. They're more than willing to help us out.
Well, I'm just saying if it's something we can do temporarily or something that we, we sign a contract and from here on out, we're.
We just, we just did this about two years ago where we basically doubled the bandwidth for the county, just to let you know, so.
Um, so who else on, I mean, is public works dialing into their own? I was just trying to, the courts and us, assessor?
The courts do not come through the county, the county network.
Okay.
The rest of the departments do. So, like I said, the sheriff has his own dedicated firewall and VPN, so, that's, you know, over and that's outside of the county network. And then as far as like the amount of people that are, are doing that right now, that I'm aware of, about twelve that I'm aware of.
Could give us.
That are dialing in?
Yeah, they're coming via the VPN, so.
Doesn't seem like that many.
It's not that many. But, the problem is, is it constantly is hitting our network because it's just like it's setting on our network. Except now it's, it's being pulled from our, our bandwidth. The trucks actually set on the cellular data, yeah. But they, but they do hit the VPN. Yeah, they do hit the VPN, yeah. Yeah, so.
What's your recommendation, Brian?
Well, I would like to, as far as the, the internet bandwidth goes, I would like to leave it status quo for now. If I get in another week, if I get a consistent, you know, uptick to what's currently happening, then I think we should revisit it, but I think we should stay where we're at right now.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, let's try to do that and maybe we can, is there a way to reach out? All right, well, let's try to do that and maybe we can, is there a way to reach out to the twelve people that are constantly hitting it and say, hey, can you try to limit when you're doing that, maybe split it up or something?
Um, I'd, I'd probably touch base with the department heads and elected officials and see what they, what they can do there.
Okay. Okay.
It's just a different, you know, it's just a different time, it's kind of a moving target.
Right, no, I get it, I get it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
Nope, I'll maybe go into closed session, per section six, ten point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub thirteen and security issues, sub nineteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.